Meeting of the Board of Supervisors, Penn Township, Wednesday, May 28, 2014, will now come to order. We will stand for a pledge of allegiance at a moment in silence.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. Announcement, there was no executive sessions held by this board in the last month, but we begin with conclusion of one last month.
Yeah.
Okay? At this time, we have recognition of visitors.
Chris is on the agenda. Mr. Gauss?
Nothing.
Linda Gauss?
Nothing.
Sean Sorrow? Cece?
Not now, maybe later.
Bob Johnson?
No, ma'am.
Melody and Raymond Ray?
No, nobody knows.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
We came about the property at, I think it's 108 Railroad Street.
106.
106. At 106, 108. It's owned by Dave Pace. They have a fourth of a manufactured house that sits there on the opposite side of the road from their house. It's on wheels, so we've heard that it's okay because it's on wheels to sit there. They use it for a bedroom for their son because their house isn't big enough for him. There's electric running from an extension cord to it. There's an air conditioner in it. It's probably only about five or six feet from the road, if it's that far. And it's a total eyesore. I have some pictures. It's a total eyesore. And we would just like to know if there's anything we can do about it.
Have to send them a letter.
Okay.
And have them go to the planning commission. Wouldn't that be two living, two dwellings on a...
I think we need to send...
We need to send our code enforcement officer down to see what we have there first and then get money involved. And then if there's anything there that they've got over there and there's no planning on it, then we'll end up going back through that process.
You don't have to do it publicly. Why don't you share your telephone number with Helen? She'll have the code enforcement officer call you and send her right away.
As I understand it, there was already a call made to the zoning officer about this, as well as to the township office? And the people were told that this is perfectly okay because it's on wheels? Section 1302 of the ordinances say that it's a temporary structure. It cannot be in the same place for more than 14 days. I fought this same battle on Schoolhouse Road with a travel trailer that sat there for over two years that a man lived in. This particular place does have, like Mel said, has an extension cord providing power from an old shed. It does not have a bathroom in it, so therefore there is no sewer connection.
I guess my concern is, right up front, is when did a complaint come in and who replied that it was okay?
Excuse me. I made the initial complaint. I called, David, my name is David Kenneth Carrens. I'm sorry. My name is David Kenneth Carrens. I live at 116 Railroad Street. And I called the zoning officer at his office and made continuous complaints. First, I got ahold of the secretary, and then I also had respondents come from the zoning gentleman. I guess it's a law office or...
No.
Well, hold on, hold on. Let me have his number right here.
It's an engineering office.
Okay. Well, as I said, first, I've called numerous times asking about it. And then I understood a, Mrs. Keck also was calling about it, and also PJ and Mel had called about it. And we had initially just, when I saw that they had children sleeping in it, and then I saw an extension cord coming out of the window and going into it, an orange extension cord. And then I heard they were going to put a wood stove in. It just seemed to be a dangerous mounting on, and especially with children involved. I tend to err on, I have children, and I err on the side of protection and not having a problem come later on, and then everybody's saying, "I'm sorry, it's too late."
I'm not questioning you whether it's what you put in. I'm questioning that I've never seen correspondence filed with township on my behalf to say that this was okay. That's my question.
Okay. Well, I've never received anything back. And I was told I would receive correspondence on this after they inspected it and drove by and looked at it, but I've never received any confirmation or anybody saying good enough. And I apologize for not understanding.
That's what I was getting at. If it's favoring our side, well, then we need to take a look at it. And if it isn't, why?
I've never...
I didn't see any township police there, no?
Okay.
They just told them where.
That's all we know.
They didn't, you know, come and say anything about it.
We'll take care of it from here.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention, because I never, usually those things that come back from our zoning officer or whatnot, or copy correspondence committee, I get to see it. I don't recall anything on seeing anything on it. So I don't know where things slipped through the cracks, if you made the call to who or whatever. I have no idea. But we'll respond to you the next time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah. We'll move on right away. Okay?
Okay. Jessie?
Not at this time.
Karen? How'd it go?
I just want to address the board at a later point in time from the co-concerned citizens about what's been going on with Morrison property back there. What type of things have come from our hearing that we had that we hadn't gotten any notice as to the end results? Did it get sent up to the county? Has there been any type of approvals concerning that? We've been in asking regularly, and we're not getting any answers. So as we go around the room, I'm sure others will be commenting the same. So whenever you're ready to address that, please let me know.
Okay. Sure, Richard?
Appeals were taken to the county court. We had briefing sessions back in the fall, and the court, don't hold me to the dates. The court made a decision sometime in the October, November timeframe last year, might even have been December, indicating that substantively we were correct in what we did, but procedurally we were wrong, and they got approval as a result of that.
What was the procedural thing that was wrong?
Misadvertisement.
Misadvertish.
Yes.
So we came to hearing board. Can you tell me why, with all of our efforts to find out anything, why we were never notified about this change that occurred?
I didn't know anybody asked.
Jim, go ahead. You tell them how many times you've come in and asked.
Well, I've been in the office here, Jim Crispin. I've been in the office here many times, trying to get a little bit inquiring about the situation, and it just seems to get passed on. I mean, I don't get nothing out of it. You know?
Decisions were sent from the court here within days of the time was made.
I'm under the understanding, though, there was supposed to be paperwork sent up there with that hearing.
There was.
Was there one form or was there more than one?
Oh, it was a complete, when appeals are taken from this level to the county court, it contains the entire transcript of the proceedings that occurred at this level.
So there was just actually one form, yes?
Well, it's not one form. It's, the record's about that thick.
Okay. And that was sent up in time for this?
It was sent up in time. We actually had an argument before the court, and the sole issue that the court ruled against us on was the hearings were not held within 60 days of the application as required by the act.
Well, when this appeal was granted, wasn't someone's responsibility to send us a letter and let us know? We just now found out not too long ago from sources that this just happened. You know, I mean, that we're just finding this out now that his appeal went through. Don't we have, doesn't township have an opportunity to re...
We did that.
You did do that?
We did that.
And you failed it?
They filed the appeal. The applicants filed the appeal because the ruling here was against each of the applicants. The applicants filed the appeal. A transcript of the hearings, all the exhibits, the entire matter went to the court. Judge Mumal reviewed the whole thing, wrote an opinion, I want to say November, December timeframe. Don't hold me to it, but it was, I think, last year. And then he said that the hearings were not held within the time limitations required by the act, which is 60 days from the date the applications filed.
And who did that fall under? How did that come about? That it didn't fall within the timeline?
It would be the person who advertises it.
And who is the person that advertised it?
I am.
Okay. So Helen did not follow through with her job directed by you guys, or is this something that she did on her own incorrectly?
I advertised it. I brought this paperwork, the appeal up here, or the conditional use to the board. We went and checked, we did the dates, and it was, I advertised it for the date Dave set the hearing.
It was the township's fault.
I am the one who actually did the paperwork.
Do we have any recourse at this point in time since of the failure in our township?
Nothing.
So they just get to go ahead and do exactly what they chose to do?
That's why, you remember when we had the hearings, we cautioned if people want to get involved, to have...
We weren't involved.
But you didn't, you weren't parties...
With your responsibility, file it.
And I did.
Not on time.
Yes, I did.
Well, somebody didn't. That's what you just told us.
The time was the original advertisement of the hearing, not the filing of the appeal.
I'm going to play that again.
I'll be happy to explain that again. It's with...
We did that before.
Okay.
You told us that we, you know, we allowed it the other building because...
Nobody showed up for the hearing.
Nobody knew about it.
So we come to this hearing, all of us as concerned citizens, and our township representatives actually failed and let us all down as to our...
And we have no recourse.
Is this correct, in what we're saying?
Back when you get banned.
So...
Now, since the township, you don't want it in your hands anymore. Is it falling on us on our own to file, or we have to get legal counsel to, over you people, to do something about this, or what?
The decision by the judge granted the appeal.
Do we have a right to appeal?
No, because you didn't enter your appearance as parties to the proceeding.
Township never notified.
We couldn't.
You told us at the hearing you were not allowed to be present.
You absolutely told us we couldn't be at that.
At what?
At the hearing, no.
At the appeal hearing. We were not allowed to go to that.
No, I'm talking about here.
We were here. We were all here.
We were all present.
You've been here.
We've all been here.
And you entered your appearance as a party or as a witness?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll check the record. But there should have been notice from the, we didn't file the appeal.
But they filed the appeal.
They filed.
You were supposed to cover us over that.
No, no, wait. We didn't file the appeal. We made a decision denying the application.
That's right.
The other side has to file the appeal, and they will be required to notify all parties of interest. And you're telling me they didn't do that?
No.
No. Absolutely not. Nobody, we had no idea. We had no idea that this even went through.
We've been asking repetitively.
Why is this building being used? Why is it being used? Why is it being used?
Repetitive. Jim has been in here, I bet you, every month since that hearing.
I've got pictures from day one, from when we started this, of the use of that building daily, daily. And it is certainly not agricultural material that's being used in there.
The way I witness what's going on in that barn right now is the fact that it looks like something that he's going to make permanent, a permanent use of that barn for commercial use. He doesn't have that, unless I don't understand.
You guys took pictures, right?
Yeah, I went out there.
You saw the board, the plans on the board. You have pictures of all that, right?
I have the pictures of the board.
And you know exactly what he has in there. Does that look like it's an agricultural plan to you?
Didn't mean, didn't.
Not to you, I know that.
Yeah, the plumbing on the floors, it looks like offices.
And that was before any permits or zoning permits or anything was even started.
Why has the township not gone in and had him tear out things when he didn't have a permit originally to actually put those things in place when he was found guilty of doing that without a permit? If I, if any of us other than him, without money or whatever, would have done that, you guys would have came in and said, "Remove that piece immediately." You can't have, you have to rely on instructions. He seems to be getting away with murder over and over and over.
Over and over.
And repeatedly being found guilty for pressing the limits of the law to get his way.
Talking about the barrel.
Have we...
We never even heard about that.
Whatever happened with the DEP, with the barrels that were buried on his property down below?
Hidden.
They were hidden in the ground. We had pictures of the barrels that we presented to the township last year. We've heard nothing about the DEP's results.
Oh, we weren't there in time. He got it out of there before we could prove anything. Same old stuff, over and over and over, and I don't understand that.
So why is this man being allowed to continue? He still doesn't have his sewage hooked up, and he's off outside of his permit, if I'm correct. He was supposed to have that hooked up how long ago to his building and his access there? And we still, he still isn't hooked up. The lines are in, but as far as I know, it's not hooked up. Why does he continually get granted exception?
Can you address that? Can you address that?
Any of these questions?
Is he hooked up?
That remains with the authority at the present time, okay? We sent the notice for him to hook up, which started that process, which is that part of the township. The enforcement of it comes within the municipal authority, which they've been running a tough show with him to get that done as it is. And I don't know where it's at. Maybe Mr. Peters can say where that's at, since he's representative at the planning, I mean, at the authority meeting. But just like anybody in Perkins with sewer going through, the township sends the notices to hook up in so many days, okay? We do that part of it. The enforcement of that is being taken care of them, and they've had a tough time all the way through with the enforcement of that. As to why, I guess if they're working on it, that he was, he done what he had to do to keep from having a building torn down. He built that building without a permit, and he done what he had to. Again, again. That's what I mean. He did that upfront. Let's work backwards from that point to all these other questions, and that, I guess, Mr. Wagner would answer those. And the thing of it was... I don't know. If you let me finish, if he didn't finish the sewer plant, then we had to write with no occupancy to make him get out. But so then he started on the sewer. And that is exactly how he's got into that, that he is still there. He was, he had to meet certain requirements to get the DEP module in, and he finally got that done, which he said he couldn't do for a couple of years, but forced the issue on that, and he got the DEP module. Okay. Got that approved and got it back. Then it was still reluctance, as I understand, for him to continue on. And the thing of it was, he was working on it. If he would not have pursued to put that sewer in there as it is, and eventually hook up to it whenever that takes place is, then we would have no recourse, the way he built the building, to deny him the occupancy. Am I not correct, Rich?
Well, the one thing I'm hearing...
Is he on a timeline there?
That's the one thing I'm...
I had to ask the municipal authority. I could tell you.
One thing I'm hearing that I'm concerned about is, assume the conditional use has been approved by the court, is he using it for something different or beyond the conditional use?
The conditional use was for him to store his...
Well, I'm hearing he's doing more than just storing. Is that accurate?
And he's been out of there regularly with Morrison vehicles. They were getting delivery trucks in and out of there. I can start taking pictures again.
I, we've had tons of pictures for the last two years.
I would suggest you get the enforcement officer immediately to look at the conditional use approval from the court. Compare that to exactly what's going on. And if he's doing something different than the conditional use approval, that can be stopped.
I'd like to ask a question, just for memory purposes. Does he yet have an occupancy permit for that first building?
No.
And he is occupying that building?
He is. That's correct.
And why is that allowed to continue?
Because of the forward progress, Cece, much to my sort grin, that he's been allowed to move on.
Now that we're talking about some of that, why didn't...
And first off, because they came in here begging for allow him to put footers in for the cold weather, you were here. This is how we got in this mess. I objected to those plans, and everybody else begged, you know, "It's wrong to hold Mr. Morrison up. It's wrong." And he went and built a whole building. And then he moved in, contrary to that.
And so why can we not get him out?
Okay? And then beyond that, then he come back in while he didn't have what he needed to fulfill his plan. So he filled that plan obligation to give his DEP module to do this process, okay? Now, I didn't like seeing that approved, but we were at the point that you didn't have no choice but to do that. And at that point, then when he got the module back, then it goes to them. He notified to hook up. And then he argued, I guess you argued about the timeframe. Was he notified enough time? Was he given enough time? That's within the authority of much of, which you sit there. So I don't know where that's at, because I haven't been to meetings myself. Maybe someone on the authority point of contact, and you, the authority couldn't like me, and there's the chairman.
It's my understanding that our solicitor for the municipal authority spoke with Mr. Morrison's attorney and gave them a deadline of June 30th. And I believe that, is that, that was followed up in writing? I've not seen a copy of that.
And I know.
For completion of that project.
And at that point, then he'll be able to tie those drains and everything inside. He'll have to comply with UCC code on that plumbing and stuff, Cece. And when he does that and gets what he's running out on the ground, which DEP hasn't done us no favors at all by enforcing that, then when he ties back into that, then he'll be in a position to get an occupancy permit when everything's in line.
But he should not be allowed to occupy that building and work out of that building as long as he does not have, we couldn't live in a house if we built it and didn't have permits.
That's right.
That's right. My next question is, you're talking about this DEP module, and I caught something you said. Was the DEP module filed on time, please?
Yes.
To DEP? It was?
Yes, yes, it was.
Yes, it was.
It went through?
It went through and got approval.
And got approval. That's correct.
But wasn't there a delay in getting that, once that was returned, to get that to Mr. Morrison?
No, because DEP sends a letter directly to him of approval, too. We get it. The applicant gets the letter of approval.
But the township also sends him a notice that that DEP module has been, has been received. And I do believe there was a delay in that.
There was a delay on that, yes.
Why was there a delay on that? Do you know?
Coming to the meeting, I believe.
What's that, Helen?
What, the approval for DEP for the module for Morrison. We got the letter, he got the letter. We did not send the connection notice right away.
Yes, that was, that was put back, that was, after they got the approval and went back and the authority had, you know, and it was one of those things, Cece, that this board here, okay, unknowingly, once that came back, was not sent automatically a connection notice. And they picked up on that and come back, well, it's not, the authority come back, the authority come back, and said, "It's not ours to do, Mr. Holman. It's the township's." And that held it up another couple of months till we got that run through. We handed out immediately to the authority, and they couldn't make him do anything or wouldn't do anything, and come back and said, "You got to send them the notice to connect like anybody else." And they were correct in doing that, yes.
Right, because that's the responsibility of the township, not the municipal authority.
That's correct.
The enforcement comes from here.
Okay. And they got, they got the DEP module, and it went back from there, and everybody's thinking all along the line, and then all of a sudden, the authority comes back after a long delay, "Well, we can't do this. You have to do it." And then it comes to our attention, you know, which maybe it should have been automatic, but it wasn't automatic. It should have been automatic from the time of this whole thing you're talking about, that we received the application for the hearing down there. It should have been automatic, then it got filed in time. Inner office, I'm not going to deny it, is where it happened. You heard Helen say that.
Yeah.
And that's what, that's what happened. So it's...
Just for future reference with, with future development, future improvement, once a DEP mailer is received back here, since that connection notice comes from this office, shouldn't that automatically be done? That notice to connect be sent. Why the delay? Why sending it to the municipal authority when it's not their responsibility anyhow? That's providing an unnecessary middleman.
That's how I was always told to do it. When it involved the sewer, they're always to send it to them.
To them. But it didn't get sent to them.
No, no, I meant the module to the authority.
To the authority.
The approval to the authority.
Yeah, to the authority, for them to review it, for their engineer to take a look at it.
Well, that's before it sends up to DEP.
Yeah, right.
But the approval.
Right. And then the approval came back from DEP and came back to them and back into here.
It came back into here, went to the applicant, and I sent a copy to the authority.
Authority, right.
And at that point, shouldn't that notice to connect have been sent to the applicant?
In hindsight, yes. But I was always taught before that, that I would send, if it dealt with the sewer authority, I would send it to the sewer authority.
But they have no authority to mandate that they connect?
I understand what you're saying, Cece.
I mean, I'm looking ahead to what we're going to be facing in the future, with future development, you know? Are we going to get stuck in this loop again?
You're honest with this, Cece? If you want to take a look at it, you had a glitch on both sides. The authority left the delay. They thought they were going to act on it, the whole nine yards. And finally, I get a phone call and say, "Mr. Holman, I think it's your responsibility to notify it." That was several months down the road. And so that didn't come back from the authority either, until later on. A phone call to me personally. And I come in and said to her, "Helen, you know, we got ourselves a problem. We did not notice it." I'm not going to lie to nobody, Helen, happened. A glitch on both sides.
Been many in this whole process, it seems like, with this guy. Many glitches.
Especially with this one in particular. It's just happening over and over, and everything seems to be getting overlooked by this township.
From the beginning to now.
Is there some type of special interest you guys have in this project of his that you're not aware of? It just seems like it's very biased.
I guess, back to Solicitor Wagner here. Rich, do they have any recourse other than what he's doing up there? Do we need an attorney to find this out?
Well, there's two things that have said that concern me. I said the one is that we ought to have the enforcement officer look to see what he's doing now and compare that to the conditional use application, because he cannot go beyond the conditional use application. Number two, if he doesn't have an occupancy permit, he should be notified to get the heck out of there immediately. He's got to have an occupancy permit. He's got to have an occupancy permit. I agree a hundred percent with these folks back there, that he should not be occupying that facility for any reason without the appropriate permit. So our code enforcement officer ought to immediately put him a notice to vacate the premises until such time he gets an offer.
That's the other building you're talking about, different building than we're talking about here.
He doesn't have an occupancy permit for anything, does he?
No.
No, nothing.
Then I would have, then I would suggest that you authorize the code enforcement officer to immediately notify him, we must vacate his premises because he does not have an occupancy permit.
And that was, that was where we were at, but we were working with him to get his shore project done. And that was request. We're working on it, we're gaining ground on it, and so the, he was.
Let me ask something. What's this letter of September, of June 30th? What's the letter of June 30th? That's the first I've heard about that. What's that say?
That's the one about the sewer hookup, Cece, about June 30th. He was asking about the June 30th.
June 30th is the deadline that Morrison's attorney was given by the municipal authority's attorney for him to be completed with the hookup and so.
Was that in writing, Cece?
It was supposed to be. Have you seen anything?
I have not seen anything yet, but as far as I know, it's documented, and that was, we had already.
What's your next authority meeting?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Can you find out if, can you find out if one was sent and get a copy, please?
I can go do that now.
I'd like to see if there is, if there was a letter sent.
Whose responsibility is to notify the enforcement officer?
We have been going through those.
Lenny and I will do that first thing in the morning.
Where's, where's everybody working for this guy?
Yeah, my next question is, well, it's actually twofold. The barrels that were found on, that we have pictures of on the property, let's go back to that one a little bit, because.
That's the beginning.
That was the beginning, though. So we were troubled, they, they had barrels that were leaking, that were set back into a big dirt pile. That we had submitted pictures to the township a while back, last year, and DEP obviously came out and investigated, and in the timeframe, they admitted that.
I don't know that. Did they come out and investigate?
Well, that's what I want to know. We never got the final.
You saw that, didn't you? The barrels? You went out and saw those.
No, who, I, I understand, I'm not doubting that the barrels were there, I'm not doubting they're leaking. Did DEP come out?
I don't know.
That's what we're here for.
Okay, well, no, you made the assertion, DEP came out.
They were supposed to come.
Okay, so you, you were led to believe they were supposed to.
That's what we were led to believe.
Where'd you look at that?
We made it aware to township, and we got no answer.
In and out being here.
With, with, was there a particular?
There was a pellin, there was a police officer.
Was there, do you remember if there was a specific meeting where someone said DEP was out or anything like that, or is this just general conversation?
No.
Rich, in regards to that, Lenny Seizer. Went, went out to take a look at that and said he was taking a DEP man along with him.
And within a week, he got them things out of there. I mean, within a week.
And they, they, something happened after that. Now, that, that, I will say that that's what Lenny Seizer was said, he was going, he personally told me that, he was taking a DEP man out there with him. We got the report, he was running sink water, gray water, down over into the stream and everything else. Okay?
Yes.
Nothing, we never heard anything more from him.
We don't know what happened, and as a result of that, the township, there was no follow-up. So now, here we are now, we have no building permit, and there's a whole bunch of pipes in this barn that have been sitting.
He's already poured concrete.
The officer came out, and he's ready to pour concrete in there and cover all this stuff up.
It should all be torn out of there.
If it was me that did that, you guys would have me tear that work out, because I did not have a building permit, a permit.
Or zoning permit. Or zoning, to do it.
Unless you live in a live.
Let me, let's, let me understand, there's quite a bit of difference between permits. Does he have a building permit?
Ask Helen, as far as I know, that he did not have a building permit for that, is what I was told.
That was your job, to, to document everything that was done here.
Yeah, yeah, I tried everything.
That's what I thought.
And he went to Helen and told her, this is what you have. So, again, we go back to Helen, who's not.
Are you refer, which, when you say building permit, which buildings are you referring?
It's the barn.
The barn.
This is to the barn. He's got a whole heating system laid out on that floor, and all the plans are on the board for a commercial building, which we have pictures of.
Does he have a zoning permit? Does he have a building permit down there?
He has a building permit for the foundation. That's the only.
That's, that's not the barn.
I'm sorry. Which one?
That's the one where he built, where he worked on his equipment, moved everybody in.
Yeah.
But that was granted for him, so then he could start to follow on in the winter, beat the whole weather.
Not for that property.
Let, you gotta let Lenny know that.
Okay.
Find out from Lenny what happened with the DEP guy. Did we find out January, June 30th letter?
We can't find the letter, but I'm looking for the minutes.
Lenny's on building, Lenny's on it.
He's Lenny's on it, yes.
You should let the, you should let the building officer cite him and say, you do have a building permit, stop work immediately.
Yes, that's what I just said.
Not Lenny.
Yeah.
I said to code enforcement officer.
Okay, I missed something here. He's doing another building out there?
That barn, the barn.
The barn?
He's renovating, actually, actually.
Okay.
Again, you did take pictures of all the radiant system that he has, with all the plans, yeah.
Cece, what month would that be? What month, minutes are you looking for?
They spent all the materials that are stored there, you saw the tractor and the cars.
You saw everything that was in there.
Then, then the next thing that, that has happened that has sort of left the whole ball of wax here about the Morrison property is there's a road that comes off of Mordingdove and that one-way street there.
Well, true. It's all Mordingdove now.
Yeah, so it's a one-way area. There's been road, people driving in there. Jim can attest to that.
Is there still a dead end there in my home that goes up there, where I always parked my truck for 30 years?
I don't know about the DEP.
Yeah, find out from him when he says.
In regards to that question, that, that been kicked around, that street ends there joining their property, okay? I don't know whether he can access off the township road onto that property with his farm equipment or go in and out there or not. If, if you're going to say no, then you stop Mr. Hummel and everybody else, the Wattses and everybody else, from doing the very same thing. Now, you have a township road, I'll put it before the solicitor to try to send it. Township road comes in there, and it ends against Mr. Morrison's property. Can they drive access off the end of that onto his property?
From Morrison onto a township road?
Well, it's off the township road to Morrison's property.
If he has a highway occupancy permit, yeah.
He don't.
Say, that's a problem. That's another one.
See, no, no highway occupancy permit.
Can we make sure he doesn't get the highway occupancy permit?
He's got site distance, he'll give him.
What's that?
If he has site distance, how is he, he can't really deny it.
Now, that's site distance going there with farming, but he's not going to be.
He's got a highway occupancy permit, he doesn't have, he doesn't have a building permit, he doesn't have a living permit. Then we need to check.
Well, Quail's the one that can do that.
DEP's four, and number five is you need to check to see what he's doing is consistent with the.
Agriculture equipment is a whole thing, but when he then wants to start bringing all his trucks in there. I just bought that house on the end, I have a five-year-old and a one-year-old. I don't want to see trucks up and down. A tractor's going five miles an hour, these guys at the end of the day for work are in the morning tearing out of there.
My suggestion is he gets a letter.
I don't want to see it.
Hand-delivered and certified, he ceases immediately.
So provided that the township lost this case concerning his conditional use of the barn, there is one piece of the puzzle that's still missing, is the road access that he's supposed to have to that barn. Now, I have Google Earth from back when the farm was owned by my parents, and I can tell you that the road that he wants to put in was non-existent in that.
That he's using.
Okay? He is actually creating a new road to that property back there, not using the existing road, the farm road that was there originally, which he has since buried under farm activity, which is fine. But should he not have a permit or put in a, a, appropriate road to have access to his conditional use building now?
This was in front of the planning commission also, and they were talking about them doing the road.
He, he has attractive ground. There was what appeared to be a road on it that you had access to his.
No, there wasn't ever.
Not on that side, it was actually pasture, and I have a whole picture of that.
Okay, so is this new access or this new road on his property?
It is. Does he not have to have some kind of access for any purpose for fire or?
Access from the township road is different than having someone have a road on their own property.
To use their commercial vehicles to come back to a property that's not even commercially.
Anybody, anybody whose property is big enough, they can build a road on their own property. If you had a barn a mile back and you owned the whole mile, you could build a road back there.
So why was the planning commission talking about how he would have to get the permits to build a road, that road?
To that barn.
We went to that meeting.
And that was, that was in regard to the development, the houses, and the other things.
Okay.
That was, that was when he had the housing plan, had all the plans, remember?
Is there anything else from anybody else? Even if Jim had liked to do it all.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, I guess, what I wrote down here is that you guys are going to check on the occupancy enforcement as well as the building permit enforcement and do a DEP follow-up?
We're gonna.
There's five things we're doing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll, I'll put that in the form of just indicating to the board for it to make the appropriate motion. DEP follow-up. And determine.
Did you find anything, Cece?
I'm still trying.
One more thing before I comply. Because Mr. Morrison's attorney is part of the planning commission for Perry County, is there some type of conflict of interest that can be filed by the township concerning that process? Because he's on that commission up there to actually approve these things, I really think that there's, you know, something going on that's creating.
Well, that's, that's, that's an appropriate question, but I think what you ultimately find is the Perry County Planning Commission is, number one, a recommending body, but number two, loses its authority once we pass our own ordinance here. They are nothing more than a recommending body. We don't have to listen to them. They don't have any influence one way or another.
But the, so the ultimate end is you guys.
The, when, when, when the municipality's.
Township overrides the other.
When the municipality's planning code was passed in 1957, it provided that if a municipality developed its own SADO, subdivision land development ordinance, that that would take priority and preempt any county SADO that was in place. Perry County developed their own plan, municipalities followed thereafter by becoming more unique and doing it more consistent with what their individual needs are. Soon as this township passed its own SADO, that preempted anything the county had, and if, if it's inconsistent with the county, ours controls.
So if they make this, the future zoning that's coming down from their office, that lot behind where we all live, it looks like it's going to go commercial.
Who is they?
To the county.
County doesn't have the, county doesn't have the authority to tell us how to zone property.
Okay, but the county was recommending that to be commercial. Are we, are we going to have some type of a hearing or, or something of that nature? How will we be notified that these changes are coming down to you guys?
If, if, if a person who owns property desires to change the zoning on the property, or, and they can file an application with the township, or if a township decides they want to change a particular zone, it has to go through a hearing process and notifications to do that. The county can't just say, we're taking that tract and rezoning it. It's the municipality that does that, and we have to advertise, et cetera, et cetera.
So I know from, from my experience with my parents owning that, it was rezoned commercial down there at the end.
It would have had to have been rezoned by this board.
It was. And which opened up for them to be able to sell the commercial property at the end of that property at that point in given time.
Right.
How, they didn't have any type of letter or anything given to them that I've ever been aware of or that has ever been spoken to me that that zoning actually changed. We actually had to come in and see Hullett, because our agricultural property had changed so much that we needed to make sure it was grandfathered in, that I could keep the horses on the property to meet those standards, because we were running short with the amount of animals that I had on the farm.
When rezoning occurs, it has to be advertised in the, in the newspaper, there has to be hearings. People should be, pay attention to that, in all due respect. So many times, things are advertised in papers and people don't see them until it's too late.
The newspaper's becoming a sort of a dying art in a lot of respects.
Unfortunately, the laws don't allow us to.
The law hasn't caught up with it yet.
It's been missed, too.
It hasn't caught up with it yet, unfortunately.
You don't read the newspaper.
When you're talking about the zoning change, are you talking when we first put zoning in, back in 2003?
Yes.
Okay.
Back in 2003, after we, they owned the farm, 2003 zoning came in, they lived in another county completely, they were not in this county at all. They didn't live here. This farm was operating as a separate entity to their living estate, so they, they had no idea that it had changed until later. And then we were, when we sold some of the property at one point, then we found out that we didn't even have all the add property, and that's when I came to see Helen. If you remember Helen, I came in because we wanted to make sure we could keep the amount of animals on there, and rezoned it that we had conditional, what's the right term for that to?
Non-conformance.
Non-conformity, yeah. Otherwise, we were going to be kicked out of there. Had no idea that this stuff was even taking place back then. So my concern is somehow we're not up with the times to get people informed about some of the things that might happen here in this township.
2003, there would have, there would have had to be a complete advertisement of the proposed ordinance. There was hearings here, planning commission.
In Perry County papers, or was it in Patriot News?
No, it would have been in the record.
It would have been in the record, which they're not, they were not part of the county. How would they, they didn't even get the Duncan record, see what I'm saying?
Well, but in all due respect, the obligation is not dispense to notify individual people, is to advertise it generally. The way the dispense planning code reads is you have to notify the public by publicizing newspaper two successive times, no greater than 30, no less than seven, of, of a, of a hearing, and then you have to re-advertise for the adoption. And that was done in 2003 when all this was adopted.
Paper of general circulation in the area.
Yeah, that's what it says. I got five things. Highway occupancy permit, building permit, occupancy permit, DEP follow-up, and the determination if the current use is consistent with conditional use application, recommend the board direct the appropriate officers, either zoning or permit, building permit officers, to immediately undertake that investigation.
How about a cis letter? Cece, a cis letter?
Yeah, that, she's going to see if you file a letter.
These have not been approved by Mr. Morrison.
You don't expect me to read this, Cece?
I got my phone.
What's the, is this, this year?
Yes, this was just happening on May 7th.
Can you send it to me? I know, they won't get approval. Are they in your email? Is that your email?
Yeah.
I can, I can write it down for you. Stop laughing, I'm old.
That's why you get, it all hard.
P R O X 22 at gmail dot com. If you would, if you would send me that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Cece.
The questions come up now, that you set a timeframe on that?
On what?
On what he's, what he has given you.
The recommendation, if they accept it, is that, the, the recommendation is they do it immediately.
First thing in the morning. This is the five things to do. The cis letter. Do we do that at the headquarters?
I do it immediately.
They were giving me the.
Yeah.
I put down the time on it, but it's not, nothing said. You'd be surprised how much things pick up. Quiet on down.
You, you wish to move him, Rick, make a motion? Have a little touch of air for order? Okay?
Hit your gavel.
That makes everybody may have been using gavel.
I'd let you know.
Okay, all right. I'd recommend that the board immediately direct the appropriate officer to check into the highway occupancy permit issue, the building permit issue, occupancy permit issue, DEP follow-up, and finally determine if the use is consistent with the conditional use application that was filed. To that end, I'd recommend the board also consider send, not consider, send an immediate cease and desist all operations and vacate the premises until such time these permits are applied for and appropriately received.
Okay. Kurt Dur?
Yeah, said pretty much all I'm gonna say, right?
Uh, Ryan's on the agenda, Keith's on the agenda, Jody?
Uh, just curious, I don't want to worry about anything additional to this conversation, but when you said hearings and misadvertising is an appeals plural, does that affect DeBerk also?
Yeah.
So DeBerk is the same situation?
Yes.
It was misadvertised and we're in the same boat with that?
Yes, yes. Hearings have to be within sixty days of the application.
Okay. What about the injunction with the recycle center? What's the status on that?
The other recycling center?
The board.
I don't know how that looked. For some reason, I'm missing that. That's been riding for a long time, Rich. He never met with any compliance up there. You took care of it, filed with New Bluefield, and things laying dead somewhere.
I'll follow up to one of them.
Okay?
That was the same status?
No, it's a different, that's a different status.
That's a different status, Jody.
Who is it?
Um, it's Mike Ward's property.
Yeah, it was a non-compliance issue, yes.
Just curious, thank you.
Uh, it would be under MW two incorporated. Okay. Uh, Mr. Carnes?
I already spoke.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Binner?
Nothing at this time.
Henry?
Nothing.
Mr. Fickle?
Yes, I'd like to answer the, uh, right to know request I had submitted. Um, we're no good with this. There was an affidavit that he sent to the office of local records regarding criminal activity at Perry County. So I'm wondering, was, are there more instances with Chief Pickles? Were we on the same page with what I was looking for?
In that the, in that the, the right to know officer ruled the way they did, I think that was appropriate.
Yeah, but the incident was in Dolphin County, not Perry County.
But the right to know is governed by this, because it was made in this township.
So, since there was a letter, I'd just like to ask Brian McGuire if he had knowledge of, uh, another case, a district attorney?
No, I do not.
And Cece, when you were supervisor, did you have knowledge of the letter from the district attorney regarding?
Mr., I didn't.
Oh, okay. Uh, Mr. Christman, anything else? Okay. Stanley?
Nothing.
Mr. Brous?
No, I have nothing.
Wright, Rice, I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
Uh, Karen Taskcheck. And Lee? Lee? You got anything to say?
Sorry?
You got anything to say?
Oh, I'm saying hi to her.
That's all. Anyone I missed?
Yes.
Oh, there you are.
I did sign it, I believe.
Oh, yes, you did, sorry.
Just a thank you to the residents of the township, as well as supervisors, um, yeah, Duncan County and us for your continued support. I don't have any formal presentation for you tonight. I did submit, uh, the year-end report for two thousand and thirteen last month, and certainly if there are any questions pending with that, or anything you need from us, please let us know. Thank you.
Now we're done.
Okay.
Okay.
Envoys expenditures for you, for approval or rejection. Is the wish of the board, and is our secretary, I mean, our treasurer, have anything to offer in regards to invoicing expenditure?
Um, in addition to the normal monthly bills, uh, we did have a few additional, uh, annual payments, uh, for the annual maintenance, for the payroll system and the accounts payable system. Uh, we processed that check this month. Uh, we paid Morris for the audit, which is a annual item. Um, we made a payment, um, for the, uh, pension payment, which is an annual payment.
That extra payment that came in the sixteen thousand?
Pardon?
The extra payment for the police pension, we paid that.
Yes.
And also then for liquid fuels this time, we had a payment for E-Free oil.
Other than that, it's just the normal monthly bills.
Okay. Was wish of the board for approval or rejection of the invoicing expenditure? I'll make a motion, we paid the bills.
I second.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it. So, treasurer's report for you, for approval or rejection. Any comments from our treasurer? And we go to the treasurer's report.
There were additional deposits this month, uh, from capital tax for the earned income tax and the L S T.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I approve the treasurer's report, the accepted or approved subject of audit.
Okay, motion made, I hear a second.
I second.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it. So, whatever. Okay, you have before you the minutes for April the twenty-eighth, in regards to the Ag Security Hearing, April the thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, on the wireless hearing, and April the thirtieth for two thousand and fourteen, uh, regular meetings. Okay? Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes collectively?
I make that motion.
Okay, motion made, do I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it. So, whatever. Okay, you have before you the minutes for April the twenty-eighth, in regards to the Ag Security Hearing, April the thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, on the wireless hearing, and April the thirtieth for two thousand and fourteen, uh, regular meetings. Okay? Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes collectively?
I make that motion.
Okay, motion made, do I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it. So, whatever. Okay, you have before you the minutes for April the twenty-eighth, in regards to the Ag Security Hearing, April the thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, on the wireless hearing, and April the thirtieth for two thousand and fourteen, uh, regular meetings. Okay? Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes collectively?
I make that motion.
Okay, motion made, do I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it. So, whatever. Next up is our highway report. Well, you thought the population, I mean, the visitors were long-winded, wait till I get started. I did attend a meeting up here with the lady at Mutsy Balls, where we've had so many complaints that the arrows aren't working. I was up there for over two hours. Okay. Everything was functioning the day I was there. It is a little complex, and I understand maybe how so many people were misled on that. Pruching Mutsy Balls up there, the traffic light is designed to keep the green on, to keep traffic flowing, while the left-hand turn to go in Mutsy Balls going up the hill does not require a yellow light, as long as it's green, there's nobody coming. They can turn in there, there will be no light. They have to sit there for a long period of time, in case they can't get across because of traffic the other way, for that, to trigger the thing that the arrow light comes on. A little different coming down the hill. You can sit there at that light, and you'll get a yellow arrow going in to go in, but that's also shows that people coming down the turning lane can turn in there, even though it's a stop there. So it's set up there a little bit different up there. So no malfunctions in it at all while I was there, but I was there two hours and never saw the yellow coming on, on the upside. You may be there four hours in that light coming up over the hill, if the traffic does not have someone sit there for a while to turn in, and it's designed to keep the traffic flow moving. And, uh, we sit there. Then we called out to the EMS and had the ambulances come in to see whether the preemptives were working. It took a look at where the signal is up there, you have a band coming around the bend and coming down the road. The first explanation I got was, if the ambulance is coming in here faster than a certain speed, okay, they will trigger that, but they will be through it before it has time to light the light up. Okay? So we called your ambulance, asked them to come in there twenty mile an hour. It worked perfect, both ways. So because of that bend up there, they did adjust it to try to get more distance for you, great. Do you know what I'm saying? So.
Did they, did they move the eastbound receiver? That was one of the comments in the email from Mr. Mann.
I don't think they moved it yet.
They said they were going to.
Going, you know what I'm saying? Well, they, they adjusted the angle of some of them up there that day. You know what I'm saying? Trying to get more out of it, okay? But at the present time, the, the, that preemptive device for the ambulance is done, but if you come flying over there fifty mile an hour, forty-five mile an hour, you're gonna hit it, and it's gonna start to activate, but you're gonna be through it before you're ever gonna get a chance to see it.
The, the, the issue was, the Marysville signal, the specs must've changed at some point, between the time the Marysville signal was installed and this signal was installed.
Okay.
Because the Marysville signal, the Valley Road signal on fifteen, and the signal at Hertford Road, Twenty-first Street, and Camp Hill, are all very quick to respond, at least to get the confirmation light. It sounds like, based on that email, that the, the process starts with the different lights, but it's, what, six point five seconds?
Yes.
To change the other lights, through the yellow cycle into the red cycle?
That's right.
To get the confirmation light to flash. So although the, the process starts, when you get around that turn, especially coming down the hill, even at forty miles an hour, you know, if the signal's red, we're stopping.
Yeah.
Or at least ensuring the right of way before we go through. But otherwise, you know, there's, there's not enough time, you're not coming on a straight level approach.
That's right. We, we run that a couple times. Thanks to your guys for doing that, to prove that that's, that it is working, but that's the case.
Right.
Okay. That being said, on the work in the township, you know, we're still continuing working on some culverts. We've got an awful lot of them out here with the bottoms rusted out of them. They work in a culvert. Drainage's widening on Linton Hill out there. We have a couple more out there, but they got quite a bit of water going through them. Uh, we're gonna try to wait for some drier weather to replace those out there, so that we can put a coffer dam in there, do a pump around to keep a dry area while we do that. So weather permitting, you know, we need a little bit of a water slowdown here. The drainage and the debris and schoolhouse, okay. We have been working on that. We were, got rained out today, but hope to be down there tomorrow, and hope to get cleared down by the tee room on that gutter that's in there, and clean it out. I don't know whether you saw that or not, Cece, but we've been cutting that back and opening those drainage up down there, and I can't remember the last one that was ever done.
I was gonna say, it's been years.
Years, and that that's ever been done. Um, when Tom and I was up at the work session, I sent, uh, Steve and Ken Mullen down there on the day for a fill-in while we were there, and they came away from Burley Lane, down to your place, they came away with six bags, garbage bags, full of bottles, trash, crap out of that gutter.
I saw Steve, I saw they were, I don't mean to interrupt, but.
Go ahead. And what they did was, I had them clean that up, because when they, they dig that stuff out, and then when you go to deposit the stuff, you know what I'm saying, then you gotta dig it out, out there. So they took it out ahead of time. They're still finding some beer bottles and stuff down in underneath there, but we do hope to get that cleaned out and all that opened up, and get all those drainage ditches down through there, and get that water that flows. Front of Handmakers there, where they put that sump in years ago, where everybody stops to collect water. That was a bad spot. Township put the sump in there years ago, it was too high, the water dammed up around it and laid there. We got in there with the cut-off saw, opened that up, if you take a look at it, put notches in it, water drains out now, we no longer have that problem. So we done that in those two days, and got, got that working and, and, and filled up, taken care of down there, and got some happy neighbors. And where they went up in the mountain log, they filled all that boughs in, sent that drainage down, run across to the neighbor's yard, we finally got in there, cut that all out, and took that back and reopened up that drain, and that was the logging people that done that. So that's flowing and working well, and everybody seemed to be happy with what we got done there at, at that point, you know what I'm saying? Township did get involved for a couple days, it's starting to clean up at Taskcheck, it's on the problem, we've had to complain down there and follow that through down there, we put a dumpster in out here, and we done some, uh, the Ridgville cleanup work, and the rest of that will be discussed here tonight on, on the bid opening over there for that, down there for that cleanup. Uh, we're hoping for some clear weather to do some patching. Uh, we have some, uh, coming up on the, uh, uh, for this detour going around, which I hope everybody take notice, we got some yellow lines on, some delineators in. Yes, Stan?
Does that single yellow line mean we can pass with caution?
So, yes, I saw that, that, what they dubbed, nevertheless, that's what they gave us, okay?
I figured, I give a science.
And, and, right down there at the, at the little hump, it's always running water on the road right there at, uh, coming off of Gamber's, going in towards, soon as you leave, turns it right there. They've tried to chip that in there, and even immediately after that road was paved years ago, that road broke up there. And in the course of it, even in the summertime, when you get into that pothole and you blow it out with the air blower, you take a look at it, there's a shale seam in there, and the water comes up through the shale, comes right to the surface, capillary action, comes up there, freezes, pushes it out. That needs an underdrain put in it, I've made arrangements to get a compressor. I'd like to do it before the road shut down here, but I'm not. We're gonna hope to find enough weather to patch those holes one more time, but then we're gonna be jackhammering, taking a large section of that road out, putting an underdrain in there to get that water away. You'll never fix it, you'll never pave over it until you get rid of that. I've had to do that other places. And you have to put an underdrain in there to get rid of it, and you'll never do it. You can't stop it, you, if you go out there and blow it out, you sit there and watch the water coming up through the shale out of the bed. So, we will have that pothole there fixed up at least for, for this others down here.
Excuse me, Henry, would that include, any of that patching, will that include that pothole in front of Mr. Corson's house?
You, you're talking farther on down there?
Yeah, in front of Bill Corson's house.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to get the water out there, Jesse, we get ready.
There's no water in there.
Okay, I know where you're talking about.
It's right in front of Bill's house, it's, it's out, people swerve around that and have seen a couple near misses.
Okay, and so we, we're gonna try to get to them just as soon as we can.
Okay.
Get a couple, looks like we got a decent weather coming next week to be working on some of that.
Thank you.
And so, we will be taking care of that. We've been down here weed-whipping, and we get a couple of those days, Steve, as a matter of fact, on the rainy day while we're up north, we'd whipped out there with a rain suit on and pants all day, around the stop signs, we're getting ready to do our mowing, our stop signs, our delineators, where you can mow up to them, but you can't get them with the mower. Looks like a shirt on a hog when you leave. So he weed-whips around them, and, and makes it a lot nicer. We don't have them all done, but we've got an awful lot of them done. I'd like to thank Steve, he, he wasn't required to work out in the rain, but he wanted, made sure he kept himself busy. And I did give him and Ken Mullen, a whole greaseboard full of stuff out there in the township, from the top to the bottom. In the two days I come back, they wiped every one of those things I had put on off. And so, they done a good job for the two days I was absent. For the rec board, we whipped, we'd whipped the banks out here, when the building coming in and down over, so we didn't lose the sight distance in front of our building down there. I would like to put it before Karen, and out back out here, this steep bank down behind the pavilion. It is one tough job, to weed-whip that thing and it grows back up out there. And I'd like to, Karen, if she would take that to her rec board and ask for approval, I would like to do the same, and leave that bank cosmetically the same as you see, and a good example is down here at Jeff Ford. I could put the fabric down over there, put the membrane down over there, and put their stones on it, end of the weeds, end of the mowing, end of all that problem. So, I would be willing to help for, like we do for everything else on the rec board, Karen, you see if they wanna do that, and I would be willing. We have fabric out there, and the only thing we don't have is the stone, uh, wouldn't take that much to do it. But that's one of them, and some of these other banks out here that are such a problem, we need to take a look something to get rid of some of that maintenance and that labor that, that's every couple weeks in this kind of weather. Uh, we took care, fixed Evans' mower for him today, uh, and, uh, that's all we had in here for, among other things that we done for the rec board. We got, uh, the, like I said, we have, uh, this detour coming up, uh, we've had meetings with Pendott. Uh, everything seems to be falling in place, a couple little particulars to be worked out with them before this bridge goes down, but everything seems to be coming together. We've met with the project engineer and everybody else. Hopefully that goes smooth, and we get the cooperation from everyone. I would like to report on the two-day schooling that Tom and I went up. I would say it was, uh, moving up to it, it was a cost-free program, and when I went in and they give you the books, it says environmentally sensitive maintenance for dirt and gravel, and bingo, I thought it chest of big bag. Okay. Clear up in the upper counties. Tribe streams, Tribe Unlimited, which stated this pro, this program years ago, that created enough of a fuss to get the attention of our state officials to want to do something. Now, we went to this in regards to seeing whether we could get grants out here for, for Linton Hill out here with it. Yes, we could get a grant, uh, to put DSA surface down on it, driving surface aggregate. Now I have all the information there for anybody who'd like to see it. Max is probably familiar with what the DSA is. is probably familiar with what the DSA is. Does leave a good road, but there is no money at the present time to put that in there and do the paving. They don't know whether they're going to allow at the present time. They're working on it underneath the new transportation bill. It's yet to be decided whether they're gonna put grants out for tar and chip or any blacktop. But it was very informative. That's what they done. And it was what they're trying to do is is all different kinds of things or all kinds of good examples. Anybody who wanna take a look at what's in here, I would suggest you take a look at it. I was surprised, and so was Tom, at the amount of things that they are now promoting that we've already instituted in a township. Head walls and walls, which they wanna see. They don't wanna see gutters being turned directly into a stream anymore at a bridge. They have other means in here to disperse of that. They've they've had a lot of good ideas in here. The big thing of it is, maybe contrary to our engineers reported in the past, you know, they're not too much in favor of putting riprap in their gutters, and neither am I, because it fills up, plugs up, and it is the devil to dig out to open it up. They've they've taken that out of the program. They don't want it. And what they're looking for is vegetative growth, good sidewalls, good banks, cut them at the proper angle, and and a lot of good designs in here. They even got roads that are minimum where they go get belt off of a quarry that run out on the belt. They cut them in half for a certain length. They attach them to a to a pressure-treated board. They dig up a dirt road. They put them across at an angle and they bury them. Water comes down, hits it, shoves it off the side instead of going down the road. Low volume. You drive over, the belt lays down. It lasts five, six, maybe seven years, depending on, or longer. It was interesting to see the video and the film of the things that they got. So a lot of the stuff that we have, we may not be eligible for any grant money at the present time. This grant money comes through our Perry County Conservation Office, has to be approved by them. And if you wanna get that grant money for a dirt road, you must you must go through them and have it approval. Then you have to follow what what they say you get it in order to get this money. I found it amazing. Who would believe that in the state of Pennsylvania, over 125,000 miles of dirt road? And that's state forest, game commission, even game commission is eligible for some of this funding for the road, which I found out. So I felt that we gained a lot. It was very informative. They put run a pretty intense program. They kept your feet to the wire. They did take us downtown. It was at no cost. They took us to the Penn Wells for all those that are arrested. Yes, they fed us well at no cost. And we stayed, we didn't have no hotel expense or anything. We stayed up there at my place at the camp. And so that there was no cost to the township for this other than Tom's wages for the day. So he enjoyed it. I think that we got a lot of lot of good information out. I will leave these in here for Helen, for anybody to take a look at them. I'd urge anybody to take a look at the program they got there. Come from Penn State, and it's all about getting the silt. Max, it's all the same thing we're being faced with the MS4 program. When you listen to where they're at, it all boiled down. They're gonna clean this stuff up. And it was it was a good program. On that, I'll get off the stump and move on to the next order of business. Yes, Helen?
The date on the bridge closure closing?
Oh, yes, okay. Yes, I have that right here. This letter is to inform you of the road closure and detour for State Road 274, Margaret Street, for the rehab of the bridge over the Little Juniata Creek in the borough of Duncan. Detour for Margaret Street will be marked with signs. Plan closure date is June 11, 2014, with a reopen date of September 8, 2014. These dates are tened. It may change. Matthew Miller...
Opening date?
Pardon?
For the opening date?
They're saying September the 8th standing, 2014. That come from Matthew Miller, the project engineer, which we had a meeting down here with him. So that's all I have. Penn Township Planning Commission before us, Helen.
Okay. First one is McGuire Ford. We have AOR approvals, plan approvals, time extension if needed, and a module. And I think Chris wants to talk.
Well, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. I know one of the engineers comments was just to, there was a minor change to the the land development plan. A reverse subdivision was added to the plan since the plan was originally submitted. That reverse subdivision is just to eliminate an interior property line that exists on the property. It basically surrounds the existing garage. Property line is is just to clean up the land development plans.
I looked thoroughly at the plans. I find nothing on my behalf that I think interferes with the road. I don't see anything with that program down there. It wouldn't bother that area down there, is my honest opinion. Okay. I did question a little bit about the floodplain lane line. It's in there because I booted across that ridge ridge one year in 72. But that's where they say it is. That's where it is. That was the only thing that I saw. I wondered about that because that water was up there flooding that. But I don't think it's nothing. They decided that that's where it is.
The 100-year floodplain is a...
It was it was right at the bead of the golf building because we had to tap inside. And then when I built that up...
Yeah.
Making sure that I built it.
[laughing]
If I leave her home, I keep them home.
Then I...
And it was, you know, the bridge, because I remember we'd come across it right up to the stop sign.
Right up the stop sign.
Park the boat right at the stop sign.
Right there.
That our dealership was driving and the golf station was driving.
Yes.
Except for when the drain came off. And that's where we had the line. They they're correct on the bank down there.
Okay. Well, that was the only thing. And I did, I couldn't remember that you filled that in. And I said, well, they got a reason for it because it wouldn't be there if it wasn't wasn't there.
We went up to the original, you know, the state had their...
Yeah.
We went right up to where the the old building was at, the old foundation. That was all. That's the level we kept that out of us there.
Okay. You have the recommendation before you of the planning commission. If anybody on the board of supervisors wants to open up a plan lane discussion, it's open for discussion right now before we take action on this final plan. Any questions on the
They did give their zoning hearing board variance requests for the lining and the
You have before you the AORs there in front of you. Does the board wish to vote on them or read them off individually, or you wish to vote on those AORs after you reviewed them there in order to move the meeting on?
I suggest we vote on them as a group.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the AORs recommended by the Penn Township Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors to concur with that, that we accept those AORs?
I make that motion. Do I need to name sections or anything like that?
That's what I asked.
Okay. I make a question that we accept the AORs recommended for approval by the planning commission.
Okay, yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay? Six, okay. Haven't heard no comments from Rick, so I think we're okay on that. Motion has been made. I'll second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. The AORs are approved. Helen, you have below on the bottom, we have discussion on a proper motion. Penn Township voted unanimously to approve the forward final land development plan contingent upon the following items being completed. These I will read. A note to be placed on the plan for verification of the floodplain limit. Surveyor certification should be signed prior to final plan approval. Okay? Certification of title and dedicatory statements should be signed and notarized. Number four, storage planning module waiver shall be approved by DEP. Five, the improvement guarantee shall be approved and posted. Do you agree to those conditions?
All fees paid.
Pardon?
All fees paid.
Well, no, wait a minute. I'm asking if they agree to those conditions. Okay. You agreed to subject to these conditions upon them being approved upon all fees paid. Okay. Did I miss anything, Richard?
No. Okay.
If I could.
Yes, Max.
They did they did enter the note on the floodplain limit. There's a minor correction to be made to it in my letter.
Uh huh.
That I submitted to you. And they did submit a financial security estimate. And I had a conversation with the engineer today and asked, we're gonna make some changes to it, but once that change is made, I'd recommend that it be approved. What what final amount is, whatever it ends up being. It's approximately $100,000 improvement.
Okay. Those notes being taken and the agreement of Representative McGuire's for this plan, do I hear a motion to approve this final plan for them down there? Subject to those conditions.
I move the plan be approved with the conditions and the contingencies that you said.
Okay. Motion's been made.
I second.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay.
Congratulations. Keith, get the building.
All right.
Henry.
I gotta finish the land check.
The module. I need approval. Approval subject to the authority's letter of...
Oh, yes.
The word can't come to me.
What, the sewer module?
Yeah, the...
Yeah.
Capacity.
They got they got a letter from Duncan.
Yeah, we got the water letter. I'm talking the sewer letter.
Sewer.
From the sewer authority. We need the letter saying there's capacity from the sewer authority. That's it.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm asking for approval for when I get that letter, I can send it into DEP.
Okay. Helen's asking for approval of that. I make a motion. We grant the approval. When we get that, she can send the the module in. Okay? Do I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay. I don't think we need the time extension now.
I guess I guess we need a shouting amen.
Yeah, you will.
It'd be nice.
All right.
We'll get those plans squared. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks, Keith.
Try to get her started.
The next plan is Thomas Spees.
Yes.
There's two AORs. And Mr. Spees is here if you have questions.
Anybody from the board have any questions regarding to this plan? What plan out there? We got access on 274, so the occupancy permit that come from the state, site distance out there.
It's on faculty, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, it's on faculty. The Panhandle Lot.
Oh, you're talking about...
Okay, okay. Panhandle Lot. I know where you're at now. Okay, that's right. I'm sorry about that. Yeah. That's why I had you look at the plans.
Yeah, I did. I saw that come out. We both looked for that. I was thinking that was across the road. I don't know what I had been thinking of.
Because the property, the residual borders 274.
Yes, okay. And the site distance there was okay.
Yeah.
Okay. As much as that we don't have.
You just didn't realize.
Too much on off. Go ahead.
I just question. I I was assuming this piece of property was off of 274.
It borders 274. It borders Mr. Valles off of Rupp Road, and it borders faculty. The Panhandle Lot will come on to Faculty Road.
And I was confused about the day I looked at that one. Okay. Do you have it there, Brian?
Yeah. I was just confused when the property was positioned at 274.
Okay, yeah. I was still confused. Okay. Any further discussion on the board? Okay. This is the wish of the board to approve the two AORs collectively, or if they have mattered into the record as recommended, or if you wish, like Brian said, read the section off, we will. That was the wish of the board.
I move we approve the all rates of requirements, one from section 309 dot B dot four, the other from section 403 dot A dot one.
Okay. Okay, motion's been made for the approval of those two AORs according to that section.
I second.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay, and after proper motion, voters unanimously to approve Thomas Spees's final subdivision plan contingent upon the following items being completed. Show the steep slope area on the plan.
Residual. Were they asked you at the planning commission?
What?
Were they asked you at the planning commission, but on the residual?
Okay, yes. A note added to the plan that there is not a Panhandle Lot within 200 feet on the western side of the Panhandle Lot. Number three, the proposed coverage of Lot 8 needs to be displayed in the site data notes.
Yeah.
The municipality name will be placed on the plan. The tree masses will be placed on the plan. The surveyor or engineer will need to certify the accuracy of the survey plot and the engineering details. The land owner will need to certify ownership. The storage planning module needs to be approved by DEP. Do you agree to those conditions?
Yes.
Max, do you have any comments to add to it, okay, from the engineers review?
And all fees.
Uh...
Fees.
All fees.
Make this motion that we accept these conditions and with the addition that they be accepted and approved upon all fees being paid. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered.
How about the mail order?
Okay, now we have the DEP mail order for Helen. Make a motion that we give her approval. When it arrives, she can mail.
That one's already to be mailed.
Okay?
I'm second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Thank you.
Okay. And the other thing, it's just for your information, is the 2013 summary of the planning commission, what they did last year.
Okay.
That's all I have of that one.
Okay, zoning report, Helen.
It's before you. Basically, pretty much normal stuff.
Okay.
Answering questions, comment letter on the Spees plan, that type of stuff.
Storage enforcement officer report.
Same here. He went out and checked about the port of property on the Weaver property.
Mm-hmm.
Probes and perks for new property and testing for repair systems.
Okay. Nice to have that report. Penn Township Park and Rec Board report.
You have my report, and I do not have anything at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
That's the best report I've heard in my life.
Okay. Penn Township Municipal Authority, is there anything to report from our point of contact or one of the authority boards that are here tonight, members?
I have no comments.
Okay, hearing none. Okay. Secretaries report, Helen, computer backup recovery solutions.
Yes, I talked to the four entities that we we got information from before. Harris Computers, who has our accounting and payroll system, their backup is only for their product. If we want extra data backed up, it would depend on how much it would be, and it costs more than the $975. Carbonite is, they quoted a price of $266.99 per computer, but there's a 10% discount for municipalities, and we only get up to 250 gigabytes. Backup solutions, unlimited space, $100 per year per computer. And it's, everything's all just data. The programs we have to maintain inherent or buy new ones. Hilton and Associates, basically they would wanna become our IT person for the office. They're saying that just to do the backup is too small of a project for them. I would recommend backup solutions. That storage is stored, is encrypted and stored at I am amount of data centers. So...
Okay. What is wish of the board? Helen's done the information there. Her recommendation is we need the backup solution file three.
Mm-hmm.
What is your wish of the board?
Backup solution, they are local?
They are, let me see here. I gotta find them here. This Carbonite. Where did I put? There. There where they are. They are out of, I'm looking here. They are, that's the wrong thing. There's that. I've actually got them for off of online, so I don't know. I'd have to find out where their main headquarters is.
Looks like they're connected with HB.
Yes.
I don't see any address.
No, I don't either. I wasn't expecting that question. But no, I can find out. All I have to do is go online and check their connect, their contact information.
And they're strictly just gonna be our backup, not IT?
Correct. IT, we use Mr. Prosser right now.
I make a motion then to accept Helen's recommendation, backup with the backup solutions for backing up the township data.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. HBAC request for proposals, Helen?
Okay, yes. Our contract is at the end, at the end of the month. Yes, our contract is at the end, at the end of the month, I mean, I'm sorry, at the end of the year. And this is the RFP we put out in the past. I'm asking if you wish to do it, and so I need to have permission to advertise.
Okay. I make a motion to regrant Helen the authority to go ahead and advertise for our contract. Okay, for our maintenance contract with our units.
I second that.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Eyes have it, so ordered.
And the next.
CPA request for proposals?
Same thing. We need, our three years are up with Mr. Morris. So they would, we'd have to go out for some more before the next year.
Make a motion if she sends those proposals out. Do I hear a second?
Send out proposals.
Yeah. Advertise?
Advertise, yeah.
I second the motion.
Advertise for the proposals. Okay?
Okay.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Eyes have it, so ordered. Okay?
And the last thing I have is the quote for the demolition of fire, the test track property and firehouse.
The long draw might process down there on that particular building down there. I've checked with Cliff. I've made sure that we've done everything that was proper by golly up to date. Everything is where it's supposed to be. We got one offer for demo in that down there. I would also tell you that in the proposal for this, we took a look, and there's no records or no indication that the septic tank could pump as required when storage went in and filled. So that also went in on this proposal to get that done. Gentlemen's gonna have to go in there if someone falls in the septic tank. While I was there, the neighbors claimed that while the rain comes, water goes in, enters the septic tank, and it overflows and runs down the street. So I also went in and talked to the people down there in regards to this. It goes in through private property to get up to that in the lower side. They were very generous and moving vehicles to let us get in there to start cleaning that up. I took a lot of pictures of it, and especially that of a big coiled snake under a carpet there that petrified one of my workers. He was ready to leave. So I have all those pictures. Steve was scared to death that couldn't even get it when he grabbed. We did weed whip it. We did clean it up. We've got a full dumpster full of stuff out here. The metal and stuff was put out and deposited out here. The owners come back, claim some of it. They're allowed to have it. They're there. They only lay there for a matter of time until we'll have to dispose of it. We kept it to a very minimum, but we started that process down there. It was advertised, put out the bid. The bid proposal's here for anybody to take a look at. To take the rest of it, remove the wall, take the building down, haul it away, and send back to this township certified slip from a certified landfill that it goes to the proper place. Okay? Then it comes back. We got one unit priced for $6,500. It was the only one we had. It was advertised, what, Helen? Yes, please.
It was.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, it was advertised on the 15th and 20, what was last?
Yes.
I'm looking for the date. 20 seconds.
Where were they advertised?
In the record.
And by word of mouth, it got advertised real quick when we were down there. Let me tell you. So when we started cleaning it up. So what is the wish of the board after this long-term item down there? To go ahead and proceed with this for that and get that site cleaned up? And Rich, I guess for us to recovery on that, that we end up as the township placing a lien on it until the properties.
Is it worth $6,500?
$14,000.
Yes, Stanley.
$14,000 by the tax assessment.
He goes, he went with Penn Harris Constructing Company. What was the gentleman's name, Helen? He's from, he's local here.
Yes. Yes, that's it. Bob Snyder. Bob Snyder.
Bob Snyder. Bob Snyder bid on it, and I think he does this for the insurance or the bonding through this outfit.
You say it was advertised?
Yes. Advertised. That was advertised twice, proper time. Pardon?
He's from up in the township?
What? I believe he is. I'm not sure, yes. Is that where he's from?
Yeah.
So he came down and walked the whole project down there. Took a look at everything down there, and there was a scope of work generated, which he agreed to. Some of it down there. To, and the townships be half down there to help make it proper that it wasn't there. I told him if he needed any fill or anything out here, out here that we have, we'd be welcome to help him out. Try to, try to, try to make it down there that it isn't just one big hole there. It's, the bid proposal was to take it down to the concrete floor. The center blocks are crumbly. There was still an awful lot of stuff down there that we couldn't lift up. 55 gallon drums of glass, stuff like that. We couldn't even move that, and he'll have to get a machine to get that stuff out of there. Other than that, why, everything's pretty well cleaned up. The cement mix was left down there. I had no need for that. Still sitting there. And anything else that was, was out here is out here until we dispose of it. Is still eligible for the landowner to come get.
Was there a basement in that house?
Yes, there was, CC. Yes, there was a basement down in the bottom part of it, yes. And it's about, yeah, it's recessed in the ground a little bit, yes. Oh, I thought I saw someone's hand walk. I'm sorry.
Somebody asked what the property value was.
Oh, the property value, Rich, and the tax rule says $14,000. Okay?
Now, will our lien take precedent if there's other liens on it?
It depends on the, it depends on the other liens. But some, somebody may want to look at it. There's $30,000 worth of liens against it, and we take, subject to those liens, we're spending $6,500 bucks with no chance of getting it back.
Do we know at this time if there's any other liens on it, municipal authority?
I believe so.
Do we know the fees on the municipal authority?
I do not.
I don't have a total one, but there's several. It's large.
Probably around $3,500, $4,500, would you say, CC?
I wouldn't even want to venture a guess. I just know that it's quite a lot.
And that's the only liens on it right now?
That we know of.
That we know of.
Yeah. I could always go check out the court. I'll take, we'll have the information one day.
Well, you have to do a search of the, of the liens and mortgages of record. You can actually hire an abstract to do that for a couple of bucks.
Yeah.
And it may not, it may be a wise investment to do it, because I wouldn't want to see you spend $6,500 bucks if there's little, if any, chance of getting it back. I mean, that doesn't solve the problem, because the problem still is a, a building that needs demolished.
In regards to that, CC, you know, I would make an appeal, come to the meeting and ask the municipal authority for relief of what's against it, if possible. I know they've granted some of those before in the past, the township by golly, they've granted some of them, I believe, that they waived that requirement, you know, in order to move on some of the property.
Not so much concerned if the money comes into the township.
Township, yes.
But if you have a bank that has a mortgage of $25,000 ahead of you guys, then we have a problem.
Shouldn't that have been done before it was advertised for bid? I mean, that would have made sense. You, you've spent money to advertise it for bids.
How good, how long are the bids good? Are they good for 60 days, the bids?
The total advertising fee's been $85.
Okay, and so you're not going to get $85 back either. But it needs to be demolished. It needs to be. That, that's correct. I agree with that.
No, I don't know how we can table it. You need to call Ioniai Abstract by golly and get the guy to do, do a research, and you'll have that information in two days. But, I mean, if you're, either you're going to proceed with it, or you're just going to let it stand there. I've heard enough about it. For two years, we were criticized highly by not doing nothing, by members sitting out there. Highly, because we done nothing. Okay? And so we took the necessary action. It's been a long draw in our process. Everybody's had the opportunity to change it, to get a building permit, to start building, to do something, and none of that was ever done. There was no show of anything, no response back to this township and the correspondence or anything, just, nothing.
I don't question that, Henry.
Okay, but the thing of it is, the idea of the bid was to see where we're at, to bring back to the township, to see what we could do. And so you got that. If we lose 85 bucks, I'll pay for it, if you're that much concerned about it.
I'm not concerned. What about the $6,500?
Well, the $6,500 is what I'm saying. You get Ioniai. If it's not there.
But you'd have to act on it tonight, right?
What's that? You have, what, 60 days you got?
I believe so.
And so you'll have enough time. Will you not, Helen? Take a look.
60 days from.
To, will we have enough day, enough time to accept the bid?
Can't leave it there.
Well, this is on May 28, 2013, at 7:00 PM.
14.
They were opened on.
Tuesday.
Tuesday at 1:00.
Remember, you don't have enough.
I may not. But if we get that information, would it be possible?
They have to prove it conditioned upon having the abstract done, and if it's feasible to do it.
Okay.
The bids are for 60 days. You have 60 days from the date of opening.
Yeah.
That was Tuesday, yesterday.
So we can act on, if we can get the information, act on it next meeting. We still got, what, 28 days left?
Correct.
Unless you, unless you want to get it done quicker and get it, get the hazards taken away.
And just like Rich said, you can.
Well, we are acting on it now. I mean, people accused that we end up in, but now we have evidence and proof that we're acting on it. But I think before we spend $6,500, I want to make sure that we're, we're out with the other liens, et cetera, et cetera. Because if a bank owns it, can we force the bank to tear it down? If the bank has liens on it, or whatever, you know?
That's, that's.
So I would go recommendation that we just table it until the next Board of Supervisors meeting with getting the information of total liens or against the property.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, my motion is to table it until we get full financial disclosure on any liens on that property.
Okay, and do I, okay, that's a made motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye.
Aye.
Now, we need a motion by golly to authorize Helen to get a hold of Ioniai Abstract or some abstract by golly to do it. What's it called? All these fees that you're accumulating is going to be tacked onto the top of this. Township's time, our trucks, and all of that. That, it's just not only the, the $6,500, yes. That, that all has to go with that.
Yep.
You'll have that information back in a day or two.
Yeah, 2326739.
Two. Two, three?
2326739, Chuck Henson.
Question, Henry.
Yes.
Is this like the road bids where after you get all the bids in, you have a meeting and with the, with the people that bid, or?
We had a pre-bid meeting on this.
And only one person?
Only one. Only one. Only one lien. From the command, he wasn't interested in bidding on it. He was at first, but then he changed his mind. It's a tough place to get into, a tough access, let me tell you. A very, very tough place to get in here to demo. It's going to be a nasty job at its best. The township did not have enough equipment. Someone's going to take a small track machine in there in order to get it done. And they're going to have to put the dumpster up on private property, private road down there, but those people were kind enough to move their vehicles. They would be in there. They were very cooperative. They would look on both sides there. So you'll have time to move forward on that. Do I hear a second to the motion for Helen to go ahead and, and make that call to, to the abstract to get this done?
Well, we already had a motion and seconded on table, and we're doing the bid.
Okay, well then, if we don't make a motion, do an hour to do it. We can't do that.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
I did make the motion.
Are you making your motion?
No, I'm making a motion. I'm making a motion, a second motion.
Making a second motion to get.
Give her permission to.
I've been acting on the motion one at a time.
Yeah, that's been.
Okay. And so I made a second motion then. You, you then include that together. So you made the motion to, to table, and I agreed to that, which we all agreed, okay?
Now, we didn't vote on that.
Yes, you did.
Yes, we did.
You did?
You said aye.
You said aye.
I second.
Yes.
I second Henry's motion to give you permission to do the abstract on the property.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion been made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Eyes have it, so ordered.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Shouldn't have been that hard.
Oh, a long meeting, okay.
Too much.
Yeah, okay. Engineers report, Max?
You have a copy of my report. In short, one item I'd like to talk about is the traffic signal as built. You asked us to take a look at them to see if they, they seemed reasonable. We checked it against the original signal plan. There seem to be no changes from the original plan that we could note. So unless you're aware, something that actually changed during the construction out there, it appears as if it was built exactly according to the original permit drawings and the previous plans. Suggestion, if you would like, is have Helen contact the engineer for the project and ask them to provide you with a, a plan and highlight the actual changes from the original approved signal to see if there really was anything that changed it. But when we went through it, we didn't note anything that seemed to change.
Okay?
Henry, I have a question.
Yes, Stanley.
Are we talking the light itself or the actual whole intersection?
The whole intersection plan.
Yes, the whole intersection.
And I do have a problem. On my property, the farm I used to sit, we put a handicap entrance going over the bank. Okay, that's first problem. If somebody blind gets down here, they're going to fall over a bank. Who takes care of that? Second off, when they came along and put the blacktop down, the blacktop is even with the indent. It's a lot of water that now comes running down.
It has to be. It has to be even with the indent. It's ADA requirement, federal requirement from the Department of Justice. You cannot have a lift for an ADA ramp. Unfortunately, I, I don't disagree with you.
Now we have sandbags laying there.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, because it happens a lot of places where the water now lays on the dang ramps and.
No, it don't lie there.
No, it just flies through.
You know.
I was going through.
I questioned that whole thing, Stanley, about the way they put that ADA ramp. It comes across there, across the intersection, goes and drops down over a bank, onto your farm, or over there at the barn, and it goes absolutely nowhere that anybody with any type of a wheelchair, handicap, or anything could go anywhere. There's no place for it to go. But yet the state requirement was there for it to be there, as I was told.
They, they have to have a method for a handicapped person to get off the pavement.
To get off the pa, I, I couldn't believe it myself, Stanley.
That was running yoga class.
Oh, I understand that. And then it worsened. They came down here, and, and, you know, they put some sand. They come down and borrowed my sandbags to put in out there, which I.
I see they put sandbags.
Yeah, they, they come down. They didn't have any, so I gave them what we had out in the shed to help them out, tried to get, get that moving along. They said they'd replace them. They probably will. They'd be good, but I, I could.
You can come get them. I'll take care of it myself then.
Okay.
You go get your sandbags. I'll, I'll take care of the indent.
But the plan that we're looking at is the controller permit plan.
Yeah.
For the signal. It doesn't really show any of the design, it doesn't show any of the contours or anything else. This is just the signal permit plan, not the construction. It's not an as-built construction. It's just a permit as, for their permit. Doesn't show everything. It's supposed to be there for permit.
All right.
So if there's a problem with the runoff coming down through there and going out, causing a drainage issue, that's a different problem for, for them to deal with. I don't know where the contractor still stands.
Okay, is that all you have, Max? Okay, we have police report force.
Henry.
Yes.
Do you want to hold off on signing this plan? That's why they gave it to us and why we wanted them to look at it.
You don't see anything there, Max?
On the permit plan itself, we did, we went through it and didn't note any differences or real changes or any change at all from the original approved permit plan.
Okay.
Now, again, it's not the construction plan. It doesn't show grading. It doesn't show construction details. This is just for the permit.
What is the wish of the board? Do you make, do I hear a motion to table for another month until they complete that project up there? So moved. There's made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Eyes have it, so ordered. Thanks for your comments and for looking at it.
Yeah, I would suggest that you have Helen contact the engineer, the design engineer, ask them for the markup plan, to see if there is anything that they know that's been changed. And two, maybe point out this problem with the drainage, if it's actually going right out through the ramp, that could be an ENS, storm drainage problem, and they should address that somehow. And maybe that's changed the ramp some way.
For information that may, you may want to hear, Stanley, the day I stood up there, the engineer there, there was awful lot of discussion about that, and I just listened, because I just could not understand.
Yeah, I went there one day with grading.
Yeah.
It was two state inspectors, like inside trailer, basically, he told me touch it.
Okay. Police report.
I can give you horror stories, if you want.
Police report.
Yeah, we have to adopt a police report, we're working on a grant, a backup grant, started working on that, and we're working, heading out with a few of the closures that will be upcoming.
Okay. Anything else on police report?
You can get rid of him.
Okay. There's one thing I'd like to do, that I'd like to skip on and hold our solicitor up, I know he's in a big hurry. But we do have one thing down here that's been controversial, and an awful lot of talk about it. I would like to move into old business at the time while our solicitor's here, and book before us the wireless ordinance for approval. Okay. And then, we'll have the solicitor report, and I don't think there's anything else there that'll require his information, in case there is questions in regard to our wireless ordinance. Before the board for the approval of the wireless ordinance as presented, and the changes that were made, and put back in, and reviews of, let me put it to you that way, of all the reviews have been addressed, all the concerns have been addressed.
Didn't you have a public hearing?
Yes.
And we had, no one attended, no, Stanley was here.
You know, there was a couple in attendance.
A couple people to ask questions, I think it's important to note you did have a hearing.
Yes, okay. Do I hear a motion to adopt the wireless ordinance?
I make that move.
Okay, motion made. Do I hear a second, in regards to that?
I second.
Motion made with a second, discussion. At the hearing, it was brought up that Henry Holmum was going to derive monetary value off of this cable ordinance, because it goes back to my tower. I made it part of the minutes end, that my agreement with that tower has nothing to do with this. The funds coming from this, any changes on it, or any additions, will come into this township. If there's anybody here in the fields that I'm getting anything of it, you need to make a motion and get it on the record. Now's the time to do it. And I hope that you're correct in your statement, that I'm getting money out of this. But I assure you, that's not the case. I was asked to abstain from the vote because of that. Hearing none, I'm satisfied that there's no contradiction to that. Motion been made with a second, all those in favor, give the consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Thank you. Brett, your report?
The only thing I have to report is, we received from the county, a court order dated the 12th of May, and it establishes a hearing on the 19th day of August at 1:30, in courtroom number two. It was presented by the Perry County Tax Claim Bureau. They listed a number of properties that were put up for, if you will, sheriff sale, back in October of 2012, and none of these properties were sold. And there's quite an exhaustive list. The request from the Perry County Tax Claim Bureau is.
The authority was.
The tax claim bureau requests the court to enter an order, that the above properties referenced in paragraph eight above be sold, free and clear of all tax, municipal liens, mortgages, charges, and estates. And I point that out, and invite anybody who wants to take a look at the list, there's at least one property that has a million dollar mortgage on it. And you'd say, wow, a million dollar, if it has a million dollar mortgage on it, it's worth some money, because someone decided it was worth a million dollars to give a mortgage like that. And the request is to be sold free and clear of any municipal liens, mortgages, charges, and estates of record. So I would invite people to pay attention to that, take a look at it, and they might find themselves buying a piece of property that turns out to be a good investment. Many of them are in Penn Township, but this is not limited to Penn Township, it's all over the county.
Thank you, Richard, that list will be available for anybody.
Is that available online?
I would anticipate it probably would be through the Perry County Tax Claim Bureau. The fellow that filed the petition was Randy Wagner, now that's W-A-G-G-O-N-E-R, no relation to me. And he alone with the county solicitor. And it's several dozen properties. Some are in this township, some are, well, they're all over the county. But the one that got my attention was the one that has all those liens against it, and you know that you don't get liens against property from lending institutions unless there's some, there it is. Fulton Bank, 488,000, City Mortgage Bank, 368,000. If they're loaning that kind of money, they must have seen some value in some of this stuff. So.
You know where that is, Richard?
I do. So, that's what I bring to the board.
A lot of your banks saw that, but then they realized, when everything fell apart.
I have nothing else, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. You may be dismissed. Same, thanks for your input tonight. Okay, you have a permit report?
Okay, can we go back to the traffic light thing? Am I to call and ask for the changes on the plan?
Yes, Helen, I think I have a big program, yes.
And tell them about the drainage problem?
Yes. That we discussed heavily up there that day I was there.
Okay. Okay, now you can go.
Okay. Correspondents, GHAR invite.
Okay, Brian, you went to this last year, that's that breakfast with the realtors. It's on the same day that I have one down on Front Street, with Tri-County, so if anyone wants to go. That's on the 11th, from 7:45 to 9:30. Let's do some breakfast.
What is worse than boards, if anybody chooses to go to it? You can take my places. Kind of swamp. Brian, wish to attend? Brian or Ryan? Anybody wish to attend?
I can't make it for sure.
Okay. If not?
He's thinking.
Well, I'm just looking at my calendar here. I would say I went tentatively.
Okay.
Okay? But I, my boss is in the hospital right now, I don't know how long he's going to be out. So, if he's out, I can't.
Yeah, well, I can RSVP, and then.
Okay.
You can't make it, you can't make it. It doesn't cost anything. The next thing is the Perry County Comprehensive Plan. They have a community issue survey that they would like us to fill out and send back to them, so they, while they're doing their comprehensive plan.
Looked at that today, it's nothing great, it's just something the township needs to fill out, their questionnaire, and send back, okay?
It's also a public.
Yes, it's also for public participation, anybody. It's on their website.
Yep.
Then I have the Perry County Hazardous Mitigation Plan. They are asking us to adopt the county hazard mitigation plan, which we've done in the past, and to advertise this resolution for adoption.
I make a motion to re-advertise the resolution for adoption, Helen.
I second that.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give the consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay, the next thing I have is the PCS Youth Award. I've already sent it to the Boy Scouts, Girls Scouts, and 4H. Do you, anyone know of any other groups for children that would like to try the contest and win $500?
Any of the youth groups, any of the churches?
Churches, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you already send it to the churches?
No, I haven't sent it to the churches yet.
And a cornerstone, the Church of God specifically, though, has a pretty active.
Okay.
Contingency.
How about Abundant Harvest, Peter?
We actively do not have, we have youth, but not actually a youth group at this time.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to send something to uncanny council of churches, as a general, to just put it out among their constituents.
And we get, the Boy Scouts won it one year.
Okay.
The last thing I have is from Cetacog. This is to do with the authority's water improvements block grant. They're asking us to confirm or deny that it's their projects is in conformance with our comprehensive plan and zoning, on any other environmental issues pertinent to the project. I don't know of any other environmental issues. It does comply with the comprehensive plan and the zoning, and if there's any historic properties in the project area. I don't know of any, do you?
No, nothing I know of. That one, in fact, the closest thing to be any historical is the old church out in the cemetery, and that one a lot.
So.
I know of none up there, Helen, we talked about that today. That's the only thing I can think of.
Reply to them?
Yes. I would make a motion that you reply to them. So I just, motion with a second, all those in favor, give the consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay, that's all I have on the correspondence.
Okay, new business?
Old business, police pension plan.
Okay, excuse me, old business, yes, police pension plan, go ahead.
It's been advertised for adoption, so you guys just have to decide if you're going to adopt it or not.
And that was the requirements that we had to meet?
Act 69.
Act 69, we had no choice, okay?
I make the motion to approve the pension plan ordinance number 2014-03, in compliance with Act 69.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give the consent of saying aye. I have it, so ordered. Now, new business?
I have none.
None, I have nothing else. If any of the other boards have anything to offer for new business?
I have a question regarding old business, something that was, I brought up last month or so. Any word on the inmates for the trash pickup?
Pardon, CC?
Any word on the inmates for the trash pickup?
Okay, that was the worst area that I know of down there, unless you know where there's another area, and I took care of that down there, up through the back roof, the whole way up to there with our own guys while we were working down there. We took it out in advance, you know what I'm saying? Wanted to get that out of there. If you have any other areas in the township, surprisingly enough, I don't know whatever happened to all the stuff, all the crap and stuff that was in the stream there at Farnley's, but that disappeared. Was there any other group?
I think the Boy Scouts cleaned that up. I think they went up and cleaned it.
Who?
I think the Boy Scouts went up and cleaned it.
Somebody cleaned that up in there, that's all gone, CC. You know?
How about over by the pull-off by Cove?
I know they offered one time, we, it was taken care of. Okay. I know it disappeared, but I never heard anything.
How about the creek over by the pull-off of Cove Road? That sometimes gets stuff in it.
Okay, yeah, there's, you can take a look at that, that program is available. One thing that we have started stopping, it is a pain, but when we're out along the road, you find people come home at night, they throw their McDonald's out, and their cups of stuff out. And, you know, I told Tom and Steve and whatnot when you're out there, don't ignore that when you go by, stop and pick it up. I don't know what else to do about it, so then don't get bad. I know there's some out along Creek Road, I'm not saying that if we have a heavy area, they want something to keep those guys busy for a full eight hours out of the day. Program's still available, they're ready to go if we call them, CC.
Do we have the forms to fill out?
Yep, that's all. They're ready to go, if we, you know what I'm saying? Well, I would like to see, the rec board here can use them, they can do painting around here, if they got buildings and stuff like that, I've never had, never saw anybody that showed any, you know, the rec board needs to come back. They want that, we're glad you bring them in here for them. They provide the paint and whatnot, they'll do that type of stuff, gladly.
It's free labor, I think we had to take advantage of it.
Yeah, so do I, so do I.
Thank you.
Okay? Anything else?
Nothing made.
I make a motion with adjournment.
I second.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give the consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.